Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open up the April 29th, 2020 meeting of the Mansfield Select Board, called to order, and I need to read a two paragraph passage from the state. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 31st, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Mansfield Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members or the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. This meeting has been posted on the town's website to provide virtual access to this meeting by the public. The town is utilizing the GoToWebinar platform. The instructions are below on how members of the public attend this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment. Again, these instructions can be found below or on the town's website at www.mansfieldma.com. Okay, Neil, can you read the agenda item?
Yes. You mean the motion?
Please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session and not return to open session under exception number three, as General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
Right, declare. Okay, we have a motion is our second.
Second.
Select Board Member Trowbridge, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, and just for the folks at home, we will not return to open business, but we will be back later on as light commissioners in a separate meeting. All right, this requires a roll call vote. I will start with Select Board Member Steve.
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Jess, yes. We are now in executive session. So gentlemen, I would ask you to mute your microphone, turn off your camera, and you have the instructions on how to participate in the executive session.
...
Audience, no offense to Mayhew and Joe. To go to meetings, you could do 50 at a time, yes? Hey, Ca- Cal, are you gonna be running the controls for this meeting? Or is it Lori?
Lori is here, and I will be sitting here as well if she needs additional support.
I'm not, I'm just as an attendee, right?
Yeah, you're not considered an organizer?
So if something goes wrong, it's not my fault. Think so.
Yes, they should still be. I don't have Mansfield.
The airport or you? You know. Many headphones. Okay, are we good? Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Neil Ryan. I want to welcome you to the April 29th meeting of the Mansfield Municipal Electric Department Light Commissioners. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:01. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, I believe, correct? So I came with a prop today. And I'll start us off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. Well done. Okay, first item on our agenda is citizens' comments. And I don't believe we have anyone who's signed up to give us any comments, correct?
No comments were submitted.
Okay, great. All right, next up.
Neil, did you want to read that? I don't know if you have to read that language authorizing the meeting to be virtual.
Actually, I don't because we did it at the previous meeting.
Okay, good. All right, great.
Thank you for that. So first up is, next up is to review and approve four minutes from January 22nd of 2019, 2020 or 2019?
2020, January 22nd, 2020.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Jerry, I moved to approve the minutes of the Light Commissioners meeting from January 22, 2020.
Second, not to release.
No, this is not executive session.
I'm sorry, second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Shawn Bell and a second from Mr. Aptwits. All in favor?
All right.
Roll call, Jeff, Frank?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Mike? I spread your lips, yes, Steve?
Yes.
Oh, yes, that's five zero. All right, next up is the General Manager's report for Mr. Solicito.
Thank you, Neil. So what we're gonna do is the first item on the agenda is a memo from Joe Pereira explaining a question that came up at the previous meeting in January regarding the net income and how that was off and an explanation for it. So I'm gonna put myself on mute and also shut off my camera.
Well.
Well, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. This should be short and sweet. This, as Joe said, this agenda item is in response to a few follow-up questions at the last Commissioners meeting. I'll quickly go over a few of the points, and then if you have any questions, feel free. In summary, at the end of 2019, we were carrying approximately 1.6 million related to receivable for under collection of generation revenue. Subsequent to that, in fiscal year 2020, we took down this receivable. This resulted in a lower net income compared to budget. The generation receivable is currently still at zero. And as of March, we have closed some of that variance that was discussed last meeting to the budget. Currently, as of March, we just finished it yesterday. Net income is at 1.5 billion versus a budget of 2.3. So we significantly closed that gap. In the current environment we are in right now, we should be able to close more of it. We still have another three months to go. But we'll wait and see and kind of see that, but we did close a good amount of it. I'll just kind of open, if anybody has any questions, I can answer it, or we can pass it on to Mr. Seavey to discuss the 2021 budget.
Neil?
Uh, yes, I don't have any questions on this. Oh, sorry, Jess.
Would it be appropriate just to ask a quick question? It's, it's not really on that topic per se, but just, I was just curious on how they think we're doing with the reduction in commercial revenue versus residential. And it has to do with the receivable a little bit, but not really. I don't know if we could talk about either that now or later on.
I would probably leave that to later on when we talk about the budget and Joe is on with us. That's okay. Does anyone have any questions in regards to Joe's presentation and this memo? All right, seeing none. I think we're all set there, Joe, thank you.
Right, thank you, see you in a few.
All right, take care.
I'll say, keep my camera off, but I'll just introduce you to Mayhew Seavey. Just to give them some props, as I know you gentlemen know, but anyone who's watching, Mayhew Seavey has been in the power industry for many, many years, probably more years than he wants to kid to admit. But Mayhew is an excellent resource for us, power supply expert, I claim that. And he's been with us for many years, even prior to my, my coming to Mansfield Electric. So anyway, he's gonna present the power supply budget, and then we're gonna go right into proposing what we think the rates are gonna be starting July 1st. So I'll turn it over to Mayhew.
Self, and then you'll be able to hear me. Good evening. Be here, good to be here again. I'm going to, it tells me that I'm gonna share my screen here. So let's see what that looks like. Can, can anybody see that?
Yep, looks good to me, and I've also got it on a separate screen as well, but.
All right, so, so there's, here's the slideshow. I'll just walk through this page by page. I, I think we've done this for a few years now, pretty much the same format. I'll start with a summary of how it comes out. We're looking, we're budgeting a reduction of about a billion dollars in cost of purchased power and transmission in fiscal '21 compared to the fiscal '20 budget. The big piece of that is that forward capacity price that we pay, ISO New England is dropping from $7 to $5.30 in June of this year. So that'll be in effect for pretty much the entire fiscal year. And that alone results in a $560,000 reduction in capacity costs. We're also looking at energy costs that are lower, 3% lower than last year's budget. And that does not include some major reductions in forward energy prices that we've seen just over the last couple of months. So I think these, these numbers are probably conservatively on the high side. And finally, transmission costs decreased about 280,000 or 6% from the fiscal '20 budget. And that's primarily while the cost of, the, the rate for transmission is going up slightly. We didn't fully account for the, the two and a half megawatts of distributed generation and its contribution to transmission billing. We didn't have a year's worth of data to be, be able to rely on. So once we got that information and saw that, in fact, the distributed generator was contributing every month to reducing the peak by reducing the peak by two and a half megawatts, reducing the amount of purchased capacity by over three megawatts, then, then that's a, a big reduction in transmission costs. And, and finally, they, while the fiscal '19 and '20 budget had both had sizable increases in the transmission rate, the ISO apparently hasn't been spending money fast enough because the actual rate came in a lot lower than budget. So in any event, the, the, this $1 million in reduction in purchase power cost translates into about a seven tenths reduction if, if you pass through the whole thing directly as a customer's. Here's a line-by-line comparison of fiscal '21 to fiscal '20. You can see the capacity is, is down by 560,000, transmission down by 278,000, and energy by 176,000 for a total of just a little over a million dollars. And at the same time, energy requirements has gone, is projected to go up a little bit. There's been some, some growth up until the last couple of months. We'll talk more about that when we get to the rates. But right for, for this year, we're budgeting for total purchases of close to 210 million. And so the average cost goes from eight and a half cents to 7.8 cents. When we looked at how we model the energy costs, where we're looking at that $210 million, which is about 201.6 million in sales. Once you take into account the roughly 4% losses, that's a little bit higher than the, than the, than the fiscal '20 load and the, and the actual sales for fiscal '19. So the actual load with, with, when we add back the solar generation, primarily the branch feed solar, is currently running about 212 million through October of last year, which was down a little bit from the same time last year, but still on track for that 210 million. We've modeled the actual nuclear refueling outages for fiscal '21. We've put in the new hedge purchases that we made in September and February. And we've, we are modeling the branch feed solar as dollars in the budget, but not as kilowatt hours because those kilowatt hours have already been taken out of the load that we model in the energy model. Here's a graph of the trend in energy usage over the last 10 years. You can see that there's been a gradual decline over that 10 years, although it's sort of leveled out in 2016 or thereabouts, and with some fluctuations that are partly based on, caused by weather and partly caused by large customers coming and going. The, it's been right around, averaging right around 210 million over the, the last four years. Once we, once we correct for weather, the, the red line is the line adjusted for weather. You can see that there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of load there that's caused by unusual weather, cold, either very cold or very warm. And, and we also now have to adjust the load to reflect the, the impact of the solar, the increased solar generation reduces the, the amount of load that we have to provide through our, through our other resources. But it does reduce the, what we measure at the ties coming into, in a Mansfield. We added the, the two new contracts, the hedge contracts from September and January. And, and we've got a weighted average of all, we've now have done five hedge transactions since we began the, the hedging program. We're using spot prices that reflect the forward prices from the, the NYMEX forward energy price markets as of December 2019, when we put this budget together. We're taking energy prices for Seabrook Millstone and the New York Power Authority from MWOX budgets. And we're using oil and gas prices for the Sony Brook Unit. we're using oil and gas prices for the Stony Brook units that that are taken also from the NYMEX for energy prices. Here's a breakout of what the energy prices are and where the energy comes from. You can see that by far the largest piece of energy is are the two nuclear entitlements, Seabrook and Millstone, between the two of them account for more than 40% of total energy. We're getting another 16% from hedge purchases and another 25% from the spot market, which is which is by design. We like to build in about 25% of the energy coming from the spot market because you want to have a diverse portfolio of sources and the spot market tends to be the lowest priced market, although it's subject to a good deal of volatility. And then we give miners energy coming from Stony Brook, from the the wind and solar and hydro resources. And the price, the average price of energy is about $25.47. In that is a is a lot of nuclear that's about $8 megawatt hour, hydro that's only $5 megawatt hour, and that's balanced by some of the wind and solar, $57 and $67. And then the the hedge energy, which is averaging now about $48 a megawatt hour.
Maybe I should mention that for the guys to see too is that that $25 per megawatt hour makes that two and a half cents for mostly generation supply, which is an excellent portfolio and has a great mixture of non-carbon emitting is about 54%, 53% of our power power supply.
Yeah, it's it. That's right. It's a very diverse portfolio and and it is quite quite high in carbon free sources. On the capacity side, we get the we the capacity prices for the MwX projects we took from their December budget budget update. There was just a budget update for the next fiscal year that came in earlier this week. I haven't had a chance to check and see whether that results in any significant changes. They usually aren't significant changes. Particularly now that all that the debt service on all those projects is paid off. The nuclear capacity costs are all under 2 cents kilowatt hour. So that's where the two and a half cents total delivered price for those two resources extremely extremely advantageous to have in a portfolio now. Forward capacity prices, as we already mentioned, falling from $7 last June to $5.30 this June. And those also, by the way, will continue to drop the forward auctions out through 2023. I think has bottomed out at $2 a kilowatt. So we're looking at at more further reductions in capacity prices as we go forward. Forward capacity obligation is unchanged. We did. We do have a 10-megawatt capacity hedge purchase that was purchased a couple of years ago at $7.75 a KW, which eats a little bit into the savings from that the forward capacity price dropping. That was a that was a hedge purchase that didn't really anticipate just how low the forward capacity auction price could go. But you know, that's that's why you do hedging. It could easily have gone the other way. And finally, the the distributed generator, we estimate will reduce capacity costs by 230,000 in in fiscal '21. And here's the same sort of chart for capacity. Again, there's a large diversity of sources of capacity. A much bigger percentage of the capacity comes from the the Stony Brook projects. They don't produce a lot of energy, but they do produce a lot of capacity, and that has that has a big market value. The capacity hedge is providing 13%, but 30% of it comes from the forward capacity market. That's effectively the spot market for capacity analogous to the spot market for energy. And and so that where that position 30% open to the to the market is 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 a good diverse position to be in. The average cost of capacity is about $6 a kilowatt. But some of those, again, the the nuclear entitlements are very inexpensive. Actually have a negative capacity price because you get paid for for that capacity.
Hey, Mayhew, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead. Yeah.
No, the question I had is that, well, the point I wanted you to point out is that the distributed generator at 140% based on that, if you can explain that and why it's 140% credit.
Right, okay, that's good. Yeah, so we're required to to carry a reserve margin so that if we had if if we if our peak was something like $50, 50 megawatts, we have to carry another 40% of reserves. So it another another basically another 20 megawatts of reserve capacity that we have to pay for. When you reduce, what the distributed generator does is it reduces that peak. So if you reduce the peak by two and a half megawatts, you reduce your requirement to buy capacity by by 140% of that or or over over three megawatts. So that's one of the reasons why it's advantageous to have sources of capacity behind your meter, reducing the peak because it doesn't just reduce one one for one, it reduces the amount of capacity that you have to buy by 140% of the the amount that you reduce the peak by. And the same is also true of solar, although solar is not as reliably reducing your peak because the peak is getting later and later in the day when there's less sunshine. And the last piece we'll look at is transmission. The transmission rates increased slightly in June of last year, and we're also forecasting that they'll increase by another 5% in June of this year. So that factors in. We're using actual payments to for Hydro Quebec, and we also include in the transmission piece the expenses that are paid to ISO New England for for operating the ISO and for ancillary services like reserves and other ancillary services. So we just we base those on history, creep up a few percent every year.
Hey, Mayhew, can I ask a simple question?
Absolutely.
What does RNS stand for?
RNS stands for Regional Network Service, Regional Network Transmission Service. That's the that's the service that that ISO New England provides that essentially provides delivery across the network from wherever your generation is coming from to your system on a basically on a postage stamp rate. So you pay you pay them a dollars per kilowatt rate for transmission and and they provide the service regardless of where your source of energy you're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
And we can we can take questions on this before we move on to the to the rate implications if people have questions.
Okay. I'm gonna start. Mr. Sean Belt is raising his hand.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mayhew. This is really good. One of the questions I have, and I like the charts that talk about where the pricing is coming from and the cost per kilowatt hour and so forth. It seems like we're heavily heavily dependent on Millstone and Seabrook to actually get that lower overall cost per kilowatt on capacity as well as cost for raw, I guess maybe not capacity, but talk to me about that. Is that something you should be we should be concerned about that if the supply coming from either Seabrook or Millstone starts declining? It's going to affect our rate. What do you think?
Those those generators, that that's a great question. Those when be before the debt was paid off of those, you may recall, those were the highest priced resources in your portfolio. They were an albatross around the necks of municipal light departments for 20 years. And you would hate like heck for that to to turn around as soon as they as soon as they start paying off. They have something go wrong with them. Right now, those are being operated by Seabrook is being operated by Florida Power Light and Millstone Millstone is being operated by, I think, Dominion Energy. They are. They are large corporations that own multiple asset nuclear portfolios. They're they're running them in a very businesslike way. The the reliability of those generators is has been extraordinary. You know, they've been operating at more than 90% annual capacity factor for for years and years. There's there's really no indication they, you know, they're they're applying for relicensing. And, you know, frankly, until there's a better, more reliable, low-cost source of carbon-free energy, there's going to be a lot of a lot of incentive to keep those generators running. And because the alternative would would severely, if those were to retire or or go offline, it would it would really cut into the the reductions in in greenhouse gases that we've been able to achieve in New England in the power sector. So there's pretty, there's a pretty broad consensus that those are an important transitional element of the of the greenhouse gas reduction program for at least the next 10 years. Is it a good idea to be thinking about transitioning towards other carbon-free sources, other renewable sources of energy? Yes. And and you know, and you've already got some, and I think you want to continue to to look at things that are that are cost effective and also resources that actually will provide you with some of the some of the the actual clean energy credits that that you may have to have at some point.
And on top of that, you would expect the debt service on Hancock Wind and others to fall off over time as well. So that those costs decrease. Is that a good view of this?
Frankly, I'm not quite sure what the capital structure is on those. But you're right, they probably they are typically have fairly short amortization on on projects like that, unlike the, you know, the the nuclear projects that were 30 or 40-year debt. I know that that Hancock has 30-year debt on it. So, yeah, that that's right. It probably will. It probably will.
Just one last question I had in that our spot market, the spot market part of our portfolio is targeted at, say, 25% of our of our need. Is that?
Yes, yeah, we have. We have individual targets for on-peak and off-peak hours and for on-peak for peak months and off-peak months, but it averages out to 25% on an annual basis. We like to target it so that we have far less spot market purchase during the on-peak hours in the middle of the winter and in the middle of the summer and much larger spot market purchases in the spring and fall. But yes, it's that's a that's a balance, a balanced portfolio that we're trying to do.
All right, thank you.
Just jump in on top of what Mayhew mentioned is that the correctly from long, I think Seabrook did get an extension on their licensing rate to 2050, I believe.
That's right, yes.
So they did get that, and that's a good thing. Millstone is in the process of that, and there's anticipation. I think a lot of the 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 environmental groups are starting to realize the the carbon footprint that Mayhew's pointing out, that that point of view is that if those go offline, there's a lot, there's nothing in the pipeline that could ever be replaced with that except, you know, carbon resources. So from that perspective, they're looking at nuclear as a very healthy option right now until you get to a technology jump that's going to be essential to be able to provide that kind of bulk power. I do know that the DOE are and everything else, when they were working on the Massachusetts legislation, talking about the the Clean Energy Act, they're obviously starting to include at least a thought process and verbal discussions that MwX has, and I've been part of that, is that the the green, the the resources that are needed is that 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 nuclear options are very important.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Mike?
Just to follow up on what Steve was asking about the Seabrook and Mayhew, I know you said, you know, looks good for another 10. Joe, you just jumped in and said that they're licensing out to 2050, so we're looking at 30 years out. Is that correct?
If everything else stays the same, yes. I'm never, but at least the licensing is good until 2050.
What's the likelihood beyond 2050 on something like that? Or is pretty much that going to be the end, would you guess?
Hey, who? Any?
That's that. Who knows? If I if I could answer that question, I probably would be sitting here. That's I would imagine that there will be other alternatives before that. So, yeah, I mean, it's nice. You do have you do have a life of unit contract to to buy that and 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 MwX is a joint owner of that generator. So you know, it's 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 yours. It's safe. Nobody's gonna, nobody can take it away from you as long as it's economically viable. But I find it hard to believe that that, you know, there there won't be some better technology in in another 30 years.
Okay, I I know a couple of years back, we were we were struggling because of costs, but then, you know, that then once the kind of the payoff came, I think we did get a significant refund or disbursement from them. Is that correct, Joe? And it was a fairly large number.
Yeah, actually, the past two years, the last year, last year's was the biggest one, but I think about three or four times over the past two years, we've had the and what that is, is basically they have to fund the retirement. And what happened was is that they do these estimate projections, and that's what caused a lot of heartache, as Mayhew pointed out earlier with the power supply. And then when when everybody was the co-owners of this, it was a big nuisance on people's heads because it caused rates to go up. But what happens is these these funds were collected for the retirement full retirement costs. And when you start negotiating it out and when we settled all that, it came down to is there was economics that they had to return some of the money back to the owners. So that's the reason why we did it. But we're all zeroed out, and as Mayhew said, it's all paid for. So every kilowatt hour that's generated from there is a is less than 2 cents a kilowatt hour, which is great.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Jesse Frank, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on this topic, Joe Millstone's license, the reapplication, renewal license. Do you know how long they're looking, what term they're looking for?
I I don't know off the top of my head. I do remember something like they could for 2030 something, maybe Bayou has more specifics, but then they're extending it as well. So but I don't I don't remember hearing any more than that.
Yeah, I I don't know what the what the term is on that. Typically, the the initial license was 40 years on on each of those. I think that they were initially trying to get a 40-year extension, but I think they probably negotiated that down. So I'm not sure where they ended up on the on the Millstone license.
Okay, thank you. Just one last question. Where is Millstone?
It's in Haddon, Connecticut.
Okay, and why are these plants unlike, say, Plymouth? Or is it Yankee Row? Like, how come these ones are look like they're going to go for so many more years when many others around the country are shutting down?
Well, they were among the among the last ones built. They they used a newer technology than than, say, the the pilgrim unit in in Plymouth or the Vermont Main Yankee. Those were earlier generation units that that first of all, they were they were that much older. And and also, they were built to a higher level of safety standard, the the during that period of time, the 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 NRC kept increasing the safety standards. So the 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 cost of retrofits that have taken place over the years were less onerous for the for Seabrook and Millstone than they were for the older units. Really had to, you know, you you were really upgrading, like upgrading a 20-year-old car. It at some point, it isn't worth the money that you're going to put into it because it's still it's still a old car. Whereas whereas those plants were, they were larger, they were more efficient. And and they had economies of scale. You know, those are both 1150 megawatt units. I think Plymouth was only 800 or thereabout. So you can see there's big, there are economic reasons that it was worth putting the money into those to keep them going.
Okay, great. All right. So thank you for that explanation. If no one else has any other comments? If no one else has any other comments at this point, you want us to talk about the rate design?
If I could, I should have introduced it before I went to introduce Mayhew, is that the reason why we, the order of this is the, the staff and I were debating how to organize this. And I think what ended up working out best is that the, we provided the supply and May was providing the power supply budget, just from that standpoint, because that's about 70% of our total budget, might be slightly under now. So then, after this, we have recommendations based on what the power supply is showing us, that we'll have some proposed rate structures that we will need to vote to approve upon. And then after that, we'll provide the operations and capital budget afterwards. So that's the kind of order that we kind of thought was the best logical sequence tonight.
Okay.
All right, so this is a relatively minor retuning of the rates. It's not a complete redesign, but let's, I'll just start out with a reminder of the overall objectives of rate design. We want rates to be adequate, that is, that they will recover all costs of owning, operating and maintaining the electric system. We want them to be able to provide adequate funds to replace and expand the electric plant. And they also should be equitable, competitive and understandable to the customer. The specific objectives that we were looking at this time was to reduce the over-collection of purchased power costs by decreasing the purchase power charge, charges in the rates. Under the existing rates, if, if they, if those rates were to remain in place for another fiscal year, we are projecting that there, that they would produce about $1.3 million in net income, which is not a bad thing. Are, the analysis indicates that the, the distribution rates are adequate and don't need to be changed. If we, if we exclude the revenues from the revenue credits, the overall rate of return that the rates produce vary from about minus 1% for residential to 9% for general service, which is a good range. Those are, those are very fair, equitable rates of return. And, and the, the problem is in this last bullet, it, that under the existing rates, purchase power costs would be over-collected by $3.4 million. And the, the, the simple matter here is that the, the rates were originally designed to be adjusted with a purchase power adjustment. So that you could, if you were over-undercollecting, you could use the purchase power adjustment to correct that. It turns out that you can't have a negative purchase power adjustment under the billing system. So the rates just, would just continue to over-collect that there was, you know, would have been, would not quite as bad if we hadn't had the $1 million reduction in purchase power costs. But the current purchase power charges would over-collect by about 3.4 million. Normally, we would have returned 2 million through the, the revenue credits. And that still would have left us with 1.4 million that, that Joe Pereira would end up having to carry as a, as a payable to the customers at the end of the year. And, and we just thought that, that, that it probably would make more sense to adjust the rates so that everything, everything is accounted for properly. And I just want to remind everyone that, that the way the rates are designed, since we unbundled them into distribution and purchase power rates, is that the purchase power rates are supposed to just, are supposed to be a break-even. They're supposed to just recover purchase power costs and not, not make any profit, not, not bring in any net income. So that it's the distribution rate portion of the rate that's producing all of the net income. Well, it turns out that the distribution rates seem to be doing just fine. So we're going to leave them alone and adjust the purchase power charges to reflect actual purchase, projected purchase power expenses, which results in a reduction in each purchase power energy charge across all the classes of 1.58 cents across the board. In, in, while we're doing this, it, it effectively eliminates the need for the current revenue credit because the rates aren't over-collecting, so there's, there's nothing to give back. But we do need to put in place a credit, a hydropower credit for the New York Power Authority hydropower. Because those savings and the savings amount to that 4 tenths of a cent, those savings are required to be earmarked for the residential customers. There, there will continue to be a, a non-residential credit, but it'll be calculated to be zero for now. Here's, here's how the rates look under the proposed rate and the present rate. And you can see the main differences are that the purchase power energy charge drops from 9.28 cents to 7.7 cents, that's the 1.58 cent drop. The, the 1.3 cent residential credit goes away and is replaced by a 4 tenths of a cent hydropower credit. So the net impact to the customer is that they're, they're purely their energy charge for the net, it goes from 11.65 to 10.97 cents. Similar changes for the commercial, same reduction in purchase power charge from 9.28 to 7.7. The 0.85 cent commercial credit goes away. And so the total rate goes from 14.59 to 13.86. And similarly, general service demand, those, the, the purchase power demand charge stays the same, the distribution energy and demand charge stay the same. The commercial credit goes to zero and the total energy charge goes down by about, just about 7 tenths of a cent, 0.73. If that 0.73 sounds familiar, going back to the purchase power budget, that's how much we said the purchase power cost goes down by. And finally, the same, same calculation for the large general service rates. Roughly that same 7 tenths of a cent reduction in the customer bill. So looking at the big picture, up here in the left, upper left-hand corner, here's where the rate of return ends up for these rates. Minus 5% for the residential, 6% for commercial, 13.7 for general service demand, 15% for large general service. Municipal is about a break-even. Overall, it's about close to that 3% rate of return. It's a $1.4 million reduction in revenue or about six, between 5.1 and 6.7% on average customer bill. The, the competitiveness with National Grid is still, you know, between 25 and 45% below them. Looks pretty good. And that's the whole thing, the whole picture in, in, in one picture. The impact, lower purchase power costs are passed through to the ratepayers through reduced rates, specifically reduced purchase power charges. The savings from the hydropower are credited directly to the residential customers in a way that's visible. The existing bill credits are reset to zero, but are still available to adjust revenues in the future if cash reserves go above or below the target level. And all customers should see at least a 5% reduction in their bills. Now, as we were doing this, of course, we became aware that there was maybe a possibility that there would be some reduction in sales. There was, there was a reduction back between 2008, 2009, where sales over, over a year, two-year period dropped by about 10% overall. So we looked at what would happen if, if there was a loss of, 20% loss of sales to the two large customer classes, general service demand, large general service. And when we flow that through the rate model, net income falls from the 1.2 million to effectively zero. It, it doesn't go negative, but it does indicate that, that there is a sensitivity there. And that the conclusion that you would draw is that if, if, if this happens and if sales don't recover, we would probably need to be looking at increasing rates in next year to continue to fund the, the capital program. Or, or of course, you can always adjust the capital program. So that's the, that's the story.
Okay, I see Mr. Afterwards raising his hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. May you, first of all, thank you. I know you've been working with us for years and I appreciate everything you've done. With, with this, you know, draft that you put together, I know that we've, as a light department bragged over the years that, I think recently, you joked even piping that we have like the third-best rates in the state. Where would that put us if we were to go with this? And Evan, follow up too.
Well, one thing you need to consider is that, is that those rates are always a snapshot in time. And, and I don't think it would put you in a worse position, but, but though, you know, other utilities are seeing the same power market forces that we are. So, you know, it's quite possible that, that the other municipals that have low rates would also be looking at, at decreasing their rates. So you're probably going to end up in roughly the same position, but it's an extremely competitive position to be in. The, the residential is, I think in the last comparison, third lowest. And the non-residential are in the, the bottom quartile, bottom 25%. And, and I wouldn't expect that to change. And might, you might get a little bit of an advantage if these, if you're flowing through these things quicker than other utilities.
All right. And I, if I could pipe in and add something to that? No, I was just going to add to what Mayor said is that, you know, when we set up this rate structure, that's why we're reviewing these rates every year before we do the project presentations, because that's actually very important. Because while that is true, as May pointed out, that everyone's going to see the same impact, but not, I can tell you for a fact that not every utility reviews their rate structures like we have. And so from that perspective, when we have these metrics, we're showing these metrics, we can return them back quicker. Other utilities may or may not be reacting as fast. And Evan Mayu involved is obviously a key component of analyzing this stuff.
Right. And, and the second half of Mike, it's more of a comment, is, you know, we've talked about, you know, being competitive as a community and Mansfield having its own light department and looking at businesses coming into town, developing the industrial park and having the such competitive rates that we do. Really, I think it's even a better asset than really real estate taxes because some of these businesses are saving real serious money with us having, with them having us as their electric department versus, you know, the investor-owned utility. So I would just, you know, ask my colleagues when we vote to really keep that in mind because, you know, having the lower rates really helps us in, in marketing the community. So I think that that's such a, an asset that we have that we need to keep protecting. And that's it, thank you.
If I could add on, what Jess said is, I know the board members have heard me say this before, we've been involved with, with the town manager and others to communicate these messages to the prospective industrial customers. And me personally, I've done the rate analysis for several companies who are prospects. And, you know, we're saving them literally, I'm trying to remember the different ones, but one particular customer was going to save like $80,000 a month, that much, depending on, because it's low-profile work, the way it worked. In other words, going to save like $200,000 a year, something like that, I forget what it was, but it was quite a substantial amount of money. So from that perspective, doing business in Mansfield is actually going to be a very attractive proposition for them.
Yeah, assuming we approve these rates, I would suggest, if, if that happens, that we may think about putting out a press release or something, get this in the newspaper.
Yeah, absolutely. I think what we're going to do is make a few adjustments to the rate structure and get ready for July 1st. But definitely, I'm going to be putting this out as a marketing piece.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any comments? Steve?
Sure, Mayhew and Joe, great work. I'm just looking at my screen on the side here. Couple of questions and we're, we're seemingly increasing, I'll say, the loss from residents, which isn't a bad thing necessarily. The loss being now 5.1%, where before it was, looks like 3%. So my, my concern is there is that we're, is it the rate structure that's, that's causing that to happen? So that we are actually making less from residential power than we are from other sources?
That's coming from the, the source. We, we decreased the purchase power cost across the board. And so the residential customers are paying the same for purchase power as commercial customers, and it actually costs a little bit more. So there's an additional subsidy that takes place for the residential customers within the purchase power piece, which is, which is why you see that number going up. We looked at a scenario where we, where we moved, tried to, tried to move the residential back. But you end up in a position where the, the residential customers are looking, would see an increase and the commercial industrial would see a larger decrease. And, and felt that that was the, probably the wrong message to be sending.
Okay, so you looked at it, that's good. And, you know, the 5%, it's, it's residential-owned, so I'm not disputing that at all. Yeah, and, you know, if we, you know, we all know this, there's, there's no one, you know, on the screen right now that would, wouldn't disagree, but if we lower the rate, they're not going to come. We have to have other means of getting our economic development out there. But it always is good to have, you know, a very competitive commercial, industrial and residential rate. So we, we all know that song. It's, you know, if you lower the rate, they're not necessarily going to come. You have to find other ways of getting businesses here as well. Last thing I wanted to talk about is, is your decision to lower the rates as you have, but accept the risk that the first part of the year becomes, I'll say for lack of a better term, painful, especially on your last slide. Did you consider maybe recommending that we don't lower the rate as much to protect ourselves from that, you know, first couple of months of lost revenue? It'd be, it'd be a shame to lower the rate and then, oh, we've had, you know, another dip in the, in the isolation quarantine, you know, shut down business type of environment later this year and have to raise the rates again, or raise the rates back up. So I guess, question for you as well as the board is, do we want to have a position where we could end up lowering it 6% or almost 6%? And then bring it back up right at the time where we kind of need the revenue for the following year's capital projects, which I'm sure we'll talk about in the next segment. But what were your thoughts about that, you know, those scenarios?
Well, I can, go ahead. Well, I'll just start then and May could pipe in. So yes, we did consider the question, Stephen, it's an excellent question. And Joe Pereira, myself and May you discussed this a lot. But if you recall, we're trying to get back a sort of cash position back to the customers anyway. We had an accounting issue that we were trying to fix, so that's what these rates also include. The, it is too early to tell exactly what the impact is because we have looked at our industrial base and I, I can just tell you that from the top 50 customers, we, we looked at their load and while some have gone down, actually some have increased. And so I don't know that total impact yet. I can say, and I'll maybe bring, bring this up later, is that Joe Pereira, Lori and I, myself have worked on some analytical metrics to see what that impact is going to be on a month-to-month basis. Obviously, there's going to be changes, but what's the net impact change? We don't know yet. So what I would suggest is, and it's totally in the board's control is how you want to approach this. But we could look at it and we thought that from the standpoint that where the rates are and charging them what the actual power costs are, seemed to be in line. But May you, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to add, you, you touched on it, the, if we looked at what would happen if you kept the existing formula in place that we've used for the last few years for calculating the, the revenue credits. And, you know, look, basically looking at, at what the cash balances are or will be at the end of the year versus what the target is, and then spreading that over the next two years. There's still, there still would have been, using that formula, a revenue credit. And it would have probably been in the 1 cent range. So basically, the decision was not to do that. Essentially, we have Essentially, we have cash balances that we've said we want to draw down. And we haven't been drawing them down as, as rapidly as we would have liked, because the revenue kept, kept increasing. So essentially, we're saying, let's just take a year and look at what happens to the cash balance over this next year. And then we'll come back next year and revisit the, the, the revenue credits. And we may, at that time, we may decide to put another revenue credit back in place. You, you still run into, there's still accounting issues of, you know, in, in order to draw it out of cash, you have to basically show red ink on the bottom line, but we're, we're working on ways to show that. But I really did feel that, that this is actually a fairly conservative approach, because it's not, it's leaving some fairly large cash balances in place and not doing anything to draw them down. But, but having them there in case you need to draw them down, because things are worse than you expect them to be.
So the last page happens, we've got reserves for, essentially is what you're saying, and.
Yeah, you can fund, you can fund the capital program out of, out of, out of the cash that's there.
Sure. So the last question I have is, um, the, Joe's mentioned the amount of usage over the last couple of months, that's, you know, still trying to figure out what that is, mostly industrial commercials what we're concerned about. Your calculations for purchase power, what, what has happened in the power market over the last couple of months? And does that, is any of that aggressively being put into the pricing for 2021?
What we've seen in the power markets is that there was a, there was a huge drop in, in short term. Even, even now, prices over the next 12 months are, are close to record low levels. We, we, we may be doing another, another hedge purchase, but the problem there is that we don't know, we don't know whether we're going to have the sales to back that up. So being a little bit, a little bit cautious about that. But there are some bargains there to be had in, in the power market. Because of really what's going on with natural gas prices.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Trebridge.
You know, with, with the times that we're in right now, I think we can go to help out the businesses who have been hurting, the residents who have been hurting, the better off we are. I mean, I don't think we're taking a risk. As May Hughes said, we know we have millions of dollars in reserves. I feel like we're in good financial shape. So anything we can do for the rate payer, I think we should do. And if it's, you know, you're taking a slight, a slight risk, we're really not taking a risk. We, we have healthy balances, so I'm in favor of going to the lower.
Okay. Mr. DiNacchio.
I was going to ask you to give me 10 minutes to unmute my microphone. No, I was going to say, May, I appreciated the sensitivity analysis. I looked at that and I said, you know, if we're gonna have, I'm into about rates going down and then spiking back up again, but that gave me some comfort and I think I agree with the other commissioners who stated that they'd like to see this, this rate drop going, going to effect. I also, you know, I agree with Mr. Afterwards that the, you know, our low rates are, are an asset. And I don't think that's a controversial statement that requires additional comment. And I, Joe, thanks for bringing up, you know, something that's not publicized too much, but the work that you do with potential customers and with customers that we have now, to, you know, to, you know, market the, the asset that we have here, our electric department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jess, do you have something you want to add? Unmuted, you're still unmuted.
Just wondering ballpark, do we know how much cash we have right now? Totally ballpark?
I think it's in the 15 still million and our target is left. Yeah, but I should discount that and Joe will probably bring it up later. Pereira, but, you know, we still haven't spent the capital budget numbers for last year, projects that were already approved, because we're delayed. No, it's probably going to be in the 13, 14 range, but we need to get to 12. So that $2 million figure is still pretty comfortable.
Now, I, the reason why I asked, it kind of supports Mike's comment about, you know, we're still real strong and you know, we've always tried to get the rates as low as possible for several, you know, you know, let the ratepayers have paid, have, keep the bills as low as possible. You know, we have to deal with something later, we'll deal with it. Thank you. Okay. All right. I'll just add, my view on this is pretty much in agreement with what everyone else said. I think especially given what's been going on recently, anything we can do to give businesses and residents any kind of break now is a great thing. If something happens down the road and we need to raise rates, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, in my opinion. So at this point, Joe, do we need to take a vote on this? Is this the right time?
Yes, and I mentioned to Neil earlier today that the agenda didn't have it documented as a, a vote to approve, but with this item and the next item, which happens to do with the operating and capital budgets. So we do need a vote, a vote to approve the proposed rates as presented by May you, Stephen.
All right, so. So the motion has been made, do we have a motion? Instead, so who, who made the motion? Jess made the motion to approve the proposed rates and Steve has seconded. So the roll call vote with Frank?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Yes. Steve?
Yes. Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so 5-0. All right, so next up is to talk about the proposed budget, which we'll also be voting on.
Yes, and thank you, Mayu.
I'll, I'll say goodnight. Thanks, Mayu.
Bye, Mayu.
Bye. Good night.
The next item on the agenda is D, and we're going to propose, we're going to get in front of you now, the operating budget with the understanding of the rates as we just voted on. Joe Pereira is going to present the operating budget and then I'll present the capital budget. So right now, I'll just turn it over to Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Well, I'm back. So that makes it a little bit easier that you approved the rate structure on this presentation. So as page one, summary of our, the major components of the 2021 budget with the recommended other approved, I should say, rate changes that we just discussed. The result is a $1.2 million net income and a 465,000 increase to surplus. That results in about a 1.96% rate of return. On page two and three are, you know, tables and charts to visually represent MED's major statistics. Wanted to point out on page two that, and I think May who touched upon that, was that the past six years, energy sales have ranged in that 200 to 210 million dollar kilowatt hour. So it's been pretty stable in the, I guess, medium to short-term perspective. On page three, which is a breakout of our customer base. As you can see, 88.7% of our customers are residential. But while only 38.2% of our revenue or sales dollars are actually coming from those residential. If we go to page five, I'll go into a little bit, a little bit more detail regarding the operating budget. As discussed, the power and transmission is about 70% of the budget. If you add, you know, things related to the budget and things that you can't really control from depreciation, and energy rebates and discounts, that's probably about 80% of the 23.4 million dollar operating budget. So that's the big chunk of it. At the bottom of page five, I can talk to a little bit about what I'll call the non-power-related expenses. As you can see, of the 23 million dollar expense budget, only about 4.3 million or 18% of the, the budget is related to non-power-related expenses. 12% of the budget is related to employee-related causes like salary benefits. 6% is related to, 6% or 1.4 million is related to non-labor-related expenses. Those are things like tree trimming, engineering, legal costs, bill, billing and printing costs, things of that sort. So overall, the labor costs, including benefits, are increasing about a little bit over 9% for the labor. And for the non-labor costs, increasing about 3.6%. The labor costs are increasing primarily related to contract-related stuff. Younger linemen moving up the ranks and becoming more experienced. We have a pretty a good amount of people from an inexperienced perspective or lower on the, on the pay range perspective contractually. So that's them getting more experience, getting more licensed and more accredited accreditations. And then the, the non-labor stuff is growing a little bit. Like I said, about the 3% mark. So since May you talked a lot, which is powerful. I'm not going to be repetitive and go through those pages. So I'll go and we can talk about them from a questions perspectives if you, if you have them. But I'll jump over to page 11. That refers to is the pilot or the tax payment to the town. So we budgeted about 699,000. That's a 6.5% increase. And the primary driver there is, of course, the commercial tax rate, real estate rate from 20.44 increased to the 21.6. So, and you can see that it's been growing at a steady rate based on those rates over the past four or five years. And I think the last thing, it's more risk-related than anything else on page 13. And we talked a little bit about that throughout this presentation. The, the assumptions in this budget, especially with the risks associated, the COVID-19 pandemic. Some of the unknowns are, you know, decreasing the load shape, declining in collections and how that trends. And any new regulations that might come across from whether it's Massachusetts DPU or even any federal regulations that might come through, that might extend our collection ability or any other regulations that they might need, depending on how long this lasts and how that goes moving forward. I can answer any questions related to the operating budget now, or we can talk about the capital budget and then talk about the overall operating budget at the end.
Why don't we do questions on this portion first? Start with Frank, anything? You can shake your head or?
Um, no, I just wanted to say I appreciate this a little bit more robust presentation than I'm used to in the past, I think, although my memory may be failing me. And I appreciate it. Easy to look at, pretty clear. Thanks very much, Joe.
You're welcome.
Very good. Jess? My only comment would be as far as we might have to discuss an issue with maybe salaries in executive session at some point, and let's leave it at that. Okay, fair enough. Steve?
Um, no, this is, this is great work. I especially like the page on the pilot. That historical trend is interesting, because I recall advocating for a pilot that actually changed over time. And to see a page dedicated to it, really good stuff. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And one of the risks there is too, from a pilot perspective, especially on the 20% mark that May who had presented, if we go below into the negative mark, the, of a pilot, the pilot payment would, would be a valid amount, whether we could still pay that to the town from a below-line perspective. That probably wouldn't be a a good thing.
Right. That's an interesting point. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Michael, anything? Okay, my only comment, but thank you, Joe, very good numbers. Is this that, that labor increase of 9.7%? I know you explained why that was, but that's a pretty healthy increase, isn't it? I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I know we're in good shape, but that's still a big increase.
Yeah, that's, just at the point, that's contractual, that's within the three-year contract that was last year.
We only have ourselves to blame, I understand. Okay. All right. So next up, we're going to talk about the capital work plan. Is that, Joe, are you going to do that part?
Yeah, I'm, Joe S is going to do it.
Joe S, I meant. Thank you.
Yep. And go and. Yeah, let's see. Okay, good. So the capital work, work plan here is a couple of things that we always challenge the staff with, is to, we have to maintain a safe work environment. We have to build a strong safety reliable system, have affordable and competitive rates.
Joe, you're sharing with us your internet browser of joining the webinar. Try that again.
Hold on. I must hit something by mistake.
Did we lose Steve? I don't see him.
No, I'm here. I just shut off the camera so I can see the screen better on the iPad.
Okay. Joe, I mean, we have, we have the presentation in the packet, so I don't know if this is that critical.
No, no, I didn't want to show, I, I shouldn't be showing anything. I'm asking Carrie if she could, is there something I can? I don't think I'm showing it, at least it's.
You're not now, no.
Okay, good. All right. So anyway, with the capital budget, we just try to challenge ourselves to how do we maintain an electrical system? Keep it reliable, obviously keep the rates affordable. And we obviously include all the labor expenses and vehicles and total cost assessment for projects. When you look at the summary chart on the third page of the capital project, there are some things that are blanket projects, I call them, you know, the replacement of poles and, and cable and transformers. But there are certain particular projects that are individual things. Starts off the top with some, what we did want to include is the remainder projects from last year and making sure that we have that included. Some things are delayed because it's just the way the, some things because of the coronavirus has delayed some things like the manual conduit project, which is a very important project for us to be able to provide in West Mansfield. If you recall from 2018, we had that windstorm that damaged a lot of trees and took down three of the circuits on Joel Street. So this project is one phase, and we're going to have another phase as presented here as well. But, you know, that, that's an important project. So from that perspective, that's a big project for us. The other remaining projects are the advanced metering infrastructure, where we're doing a, an advanced, a, not an AMI system, but an AMR system. Being able to record, get their readings remotely through devices and then be able to report back, Pyro Rogers and everything else. So that project is on the way, ongoing. And then the office vehicle and the pole storage building. We did have a meeting, I know Commissioner Trebridge and Commissioner Ryan also attended that preliminary meeting we had a few months ago. We're having a subsequent follow-up meeting with TBA Architects on that. So we're going to be working on that. Couple of other things, well, starting that, that's the remaining projects from FY20. FY21 is the second part of the advanced metering projects, FY21 dash one. I want to highlight the, FY21 dash two is the subdivision U R B lights. If you recall, we did approve the project to replace all the overhead lights with LEDs. There are a lot of underground developments in Mansfield. And so from that perspective, replacing buildings with LED streetlight fixtures, and that right there has to be done. And that right there has to be done, it's not gonna be done right away, it's gonna be a several year approach. But at least from that perspective, we wanna get that started. The live front to dead front switches and the transformer project. Um there are a lot of live front transformers that are pad mounts and also switches that have to be as well, they're exposed. What it means by live front is that they're still in pain. What happens is is that uh squirrels, uh animals, they get into that compartment because it's warm, especially in the winter. And they start chewing on the cables and they start chewing on the on the bushings. And so what happens is that creates an outage, so and it's also not the not the safest option. So from that perspective, we wanna replace all those switches and all those transformers. Twenty-one dash five is the air brake switches, and that's similar to what we faced a couple of weeks ago. Um you know, we have a lot of overhead circuits that by putting in some more air brake switches will make the system more reliable. Uh we'll be able to isolate things better and you know, be when a when the trees come down and they take out a power line, we need to be able to restore power back as soon as possible to the most amount of people. So by doing that, by have putting some more air brake switches, we'll be able to make a more reliable system. Um we wanna replace the Gilbert Street substation, the about eleven poles that have to be replaced. Not that they're necessarily in bad condition, some of them are. But uh what happens is that because that's such a sensitive uh area where we wanna be able to uh provide reliable power, that those poles should be replaced, a more heavier duty uh base pole. Um and then uh some other things I just wanna highlight, uh twenty-one dash seven, the uh pad mount transformers I mentioned. Uh twenty-one dash seventeen, I'm skipping the blanket ones. Uh twenty-one dash seventeen is the office renovation where we have a, we need to paint the walls and carpet replacements for the building. And so that's something that we wanna have done. We started doing it, one part of it, which was all torn up and ripped up, but we wanna stop replacing that. And I should point out that the end, the last project that's listed on the chart there is twenty-one dash T. And it's really talent sponsored projects, lighting upgrades. But I know I've had preliminary discussions with um with the and uh town manager's office and be able to talk about a preliminary opportunity, and this this is a preliminary, uh just to keep a money in the budget for it, is to put electronic signage, uh some version of that. Obviously, this would have to go in front of the select board, um for approval of any in great payers' money. We pay, we 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 have our operation guys, our line department, replace signs going across one oh six or advertisement of different community activities. And it it takes away time from the line guys. And also it's a dangerous issue when the storm come up, because when storms happen, we gotta remember to take the sign down because it becomes a hazard. And no one else can replace that sign except us. So uh I'm in favor of the opportunity to be able to put a electronic signage. I had no idea, we don't have a design yet, we don't have any idea what this would look like. But we wanted to put some money aside uh for that to be a possibility in the future. And this would have to go in front of the planning board, zoning board and all that other stuff and and you guys, you folks as well, so. That's basically it, and there's a few vehicles in here I should mention too, I forgot to, I just kinda skipped over that. Vehicles that we're replacing are the twenty-one dash nineteen projects. Uh the twenty-eight, we'll kinda put pictures in there so you could see it in your board package. Um the twenty-eight twenty-eight is a a bucket truck that's necessary, it has a lot of rusted side. Uh we try to take pictures of it so you could see it. Um but that's necessary to replace, it's not a material lift, it's just a man lift, so but it's an important process. We used it quite extensively. Uh twenty-one is the line supervisor's truck, and that truck has a lot of, well, the mileage isn't as great. What happens here is that it has a lot of idle miles. And from that perspective, it's uh it's facing uh an earlier replacement that we had planned, but we need to do that. Then the vehicle line truck, line vehicle one is basically utilized by the line trucks, uh excuse me, by the lineman now because they do training. So they go up to NEPA and um right now, they're not comfortable driving it because it's gonna be substantial work on the front end. It is a fifteen year old vehicle, um it's it does need to be replaced. So from that perspective, that's uh from last, from last year's capital budget. Oh, that's the summary of it. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Looks like Jess has us to go first.
Thanks. Uh Joe, thank you. On on the pole uh issue with the capital budget, do we aggressively like go around town and say, okay, I'm making up one of those forty poles that are rotting or leaning or how do we kind of come up with all that? Do we kind of do an inventory and? Yeah, no, I think a potential driver, I know you've been great, like there was one on E Street. Remember last year that was kind of falling over? Is there like a protocol we have? How does that work?
So it's a great point, and yes, so Ralph Bellevance, our line supervisor, myself. Um we've gone around and actually have identified poles, so say, you know, it's on a very tight corner, there's a lot of tension there. And so we need to replace those poles when we see them. Um as you know, and maybe not necessarily the people watching uh understand, is that half the poles in the service territory are maintained by Verizon and half the poles are maintained by us. We jointly own pretty much all of the poles, uh from the standpoint of uh the maintenance of it. So when there's a condition, we and we've had a pretty good work relationship lately, I should say, the past year or two have been very good. Verizon's been very good when we brought up poles that we were very concerned with, the ones that have been recently replaced. They, to your question, Jess, um on Lawndale and uh that development behind that, uh those poles had to be replaced by Verizon. Uh I think the year before that, we brought up Stern's Ave, there were a lot of poles that were in very poor condition. You you can, it was ants that holes, you know, and it was really quite astounding that they were still standing. Um but Verizon did a good job, they did replace them. Um and so, yes, and you know, it's incredible amount of work that goes involved to to plan what poles we're gonna replace and figure out at. Because Gilbert Street is actually kind of sensitive because it's a, you know, that's where uh Gilbert Street Substation is, and that's the getaway. And so from that perspective, we wanted to touch upon that, and I give Ralph a lot of credit for bringing that up because he he kinda mentioned that, that that's kind of a sensitive thing that we need to get done, as well as the underground project that we talked about earlier.
So the poles that, can we like take over all poles or it's just that some of them we don't own, it is what it is?
So if it's a bad condition pole, we, if it's in Verizon set maintenance area, then we bring it up to them. And uh they've been pretty good about replacing it. Um it tends to be, you know? Yeah, if it's something that's in our service or in our maintenance area, I should say, then yes, we'll get on it and schedule it and get it done. Okay, that the coronavirus has put a damper on a lot of uh maintenance work that we tend to get done at this time of weather because you can't really work easily in the hot summer sun and you can't necessarily do it well in the winter. So it's a, I have a little depressing time right now, we'd like to get a lot more work done than we can.
Thank you, thanks, Joe, thanks, Neil.
Okay, uh Mike, any questions? Is that a no? No, okay, Steve?
A quick one, I guess, um trying to also explain the the payroll increase or the compensation increase as well. I think when I'm looking at the um capital work plan and the amount of the budget of just over three million bucks is, that includes some from last year as well. Um yes. About seven hundred thousand of it is from M M E D labor, which was that about the same amount last year in terms of labor? Or could that be a source of budget increase for payroll? Because not as much of the C I P projects are being funded or spending as much of M A M A D um labor costs.
So I could tell you that Chris Potter, uh I should say that Chris Potter put together a lot of the details on this. And so what he does is he takes the present rates for the for the coming year, in other words, for the next year rates, which are actually already set. So from that perspective, that's where it is. So yes, he does include the labor in all these projects. The only thing that's um, I should say uh uh amortized, if that's that's the word for it. Uh but we, my time, a portion of my time, a portion of Chris's time and a portion of Ralph's time is allocated already to capital projects. So from that perspective, that's built into the number of that.
So would you say that the fiscal year twenty-one allocation of M M E D labor is higher for capital projects is higher or lower than fiscal year twenty twenty?
Oh, it's definitely higher. Uh because we have to reflect the rate structure, the the contract contractual obligations, yeah.
And therefore, the the remaining, which is really operational M M A D costs, you know, would therefore be less because we're not gonna fill the void with overtime necessarily, but all right, oh, that helps, thank you.
Steve, let me uh, this is Joe, uh for uh the, from a dollars perspect, from a dollars perspective, I understand what you're you're asking perspective. Uh from a dollars perspective, it's a twenty twenty um one budget has actually less internal capital dollars from a resource perspective from our employees. So the use of nine percent that you're seeing is also related to that, that there's less, they're doing more maintenance related work than cap related projects. So that's that's inclusive in that increase in in that percentage.
Yeah, and that's that's actually what drew me to this, as I'm looking at the amount of labor cost in the the capital budget, that means it's coming out of something else. Part of this time is spent on 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 capital projects and part of his time spent on maintenance, you know, running the shop basically. In a year where there's a lot less capital project and labor induced or labor caught uh labor's less component of that, then your overall year over year budget's gonna increase. So no, thank you, uh both Joe and Joe.
Yeah, it's it's about, it's about that, I would say, you know, that out of that nine percent, three percent of it is related to less capital work. Uh and then, you know, the the rest is, you know, uh step increases and merits.
Oh, well, well, that's that's a great explanation for that nine then, if if a third of it's coming from less capital hours, capital improvement hours, I that that's a great explanation, thank you.
And I should men- mention and just gonna hint towards that is that we have an appreciation rate of three percent. And when we try to target our total budget, we actually care back progress because we'd say we're not gonna get, you know, it's very difficult for us to, I I just know for the four years I've been here. It's very hard for us to get capital expenditures over the two point five, two point six million. So when we come in with a capital budget request, it's like four million, it's like, that's not gonna happen. It just doesn't have practical sampling, and we try to match the depreciation rate to to what we think we can cover without capital expense, so.
Here, here's a great example, if your capital budget for a particular fiscal year has, let's just say, and just don't go nuts here, um has four three hundred thousand dollar trucks. There's not a whole lot of M M E D labor associated with four three hundred thousand dollar trucks. This year, we just have one, so it it's, you know, some years you're gonna have higher labor costs in the budget because more of the budgets, more of the labor's being spent on capital projects, some years you're gonna have less. And I appreciate the analysis there, Joe, thanks.
Okay, uh Frank, anything?
No. Thank you.
Okay, uh I said a couple of questions. Uh regards to the pole yard storage building. Uh just mind me, I know uh Mike and I were with you when we looked at that site. That the board, did we definitely vote to move ahead with that? I can't correctly recall.
No, so what happened was we tabled that when we first brought it up. Did approve, that same night, that same night, we did approve, uh you guys did approve the garage uh building exterior project, so that is still in the ongoing process. Right, um what you back was from the board is that we wanted to get some more details as to what the plan was because the cost was high, and there were some environmental costs that are built into that estimate. But still, nonetheless, what was the reason for it? And so uh we had a meeting, we had the, yourself, Chairman Ryan and Chairman Commissioner Trobridge to come with that and kinda go over the project and kinda figure out what it was. And I would say, I I didn't, we didn't have any progress on it because they came back with the design after that meeting that was not appropriate for for us, uh we had some practical issues that were not gonna work. Um so from that, we we went after them and said, hey, you gotta come back with something different. And uh so they're working on it right now, and actually have a follow-up meeting tomorrow uh to go over that and hopefully get a design in front of you the next time we meet.
All right, so the money that's in the budget, what's it, is it just case to move ahead or what?
Yeah, just putting a placeholder on it, what we think, what we think it might cost.
All right, that's good, thank you. And then uh in regards to the office vehicle, the old Ford five hundred, it's a classic. Um. What do we do with the old vehicle? So we, is this traded in or?
What we usually do is we bring it to the auction, a town sponsored auction, and uh they usually come back. And I've been surprised actually by the, some of the money that we've collected uh on that, so it actually works out well. And actually, I had to do some research, uh just because another thing, when we talk about our previous bucket truck that we replaced last year. Um there's actually uh other avenues you could uh go with to sell the truck. But what happens with this is liability to the to the municipality for us. And so we, actually, it's better to go through the auction process, that's what we ended up coming back to.
All right. And was any consider, any consideration given to uh replacing that with an all electric vehicle? Uh especially since we are hopefully moving towards our green communities designation, and that's one of the criteria.
Yeah, so we did look into it and we still could, but what happens is that that truck has to go to Littleton. And right now, it's not, uh I'm not sure the distance wise, how much it would last. And I think the technology's gotten better, but the charging stations, you have to make sure you have charging stations regularly. Um we would think definitely to go with a hybrid. And just for the Green Communities Act, that vehicle uh would require, wouldn't require us to go electric. But it requires to do at least a hybrid vehicle, so that would, we're planning to do at least that very minimal. If you guys are interested, we didn't talk about charging stations, but we did talk about, I should, it's another topic, but the charging stations was something that we've talked about with the town, and it really wasn't a practical. Uh there were practical reasons why we couldn't put a charging stations in at different locations, but nonetheless.
Okay. Uh and then just my last question on this was just in regards to the office renovations, um we released that building, correct? Or we own it?
So no, we own it, we have, we have, we're we're four tenths in order of a condo uh association, so we own those for you.
Uh yeah, I was just concerned that we were putting money into someone else's property, so. Oh, okay, that's all I had, I think, Jess, do you have a question?
Neil?
Yeah.
I'm all set, you you cut.
Okay, all right. All right, anyone else have any other comments or questions on this portion of the presentation? All right, seeing none, I think we can, we needed a motion to vote on this portion, Joe, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve the budget and capital um program as presented.
And Steve Shonval is gonna second it. So motion by Mr. Trowbridge, seconded by Mr. Shonval, we'll do the roll call vote, uh starting with Mr. Del Vecchio.
Yes.
Uh Jess? That's a yes, Mike?
Yes, I'm sorry. That was a yes for me.
And Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that passes five zero. All right, so, thank you, everyone.
The uh the next item on the agenda is a couple of town sponsored projects. One is a, well, the first one is 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 even though it sounds like it's an old one, it's actually a new one because this is the um in the Rumford Lot, down Old Colony Way, extending of the bike path. We've been working with the town, uh Brick House, uh Mark Cook, myself, Ralph Bellevance, uh Chris Potter. We were all talking about, you know, the renovation that we wanna do, the the town must do with the lot as well as the going down to extend the bike path. So the cost, what you have in front of you is the estimated cost of sixty-seven, little, just under sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um it's a lot of putting up some underground as well as putting in uh eight fixtures that match the North Main Street fixtures. And the four different style fixtures are tho- those that are match the uh similar fixtures that are at the train station, that's in the parking lot. So what do you have in front of you is just the expense that it would cost the Mansfield Electric uh to go forward with that project.
So is that, is is there a net increase or of, is this the greens?
I'm sorry?
It uh, this estimate, uh just give me the summary of what the net impact of this new estimate is.
It's actually none, it's a new estimate because it's it's not, uh it's a new project extending the bike path from the uh the parking lot in Rumford Ave and going down Old Colony Way to meet the, where the old Colony Way were right after uh North Main Street, so continuing that bike path, it's part of that project.
All right, so it's the cost is fifty-nine thousand two twenty step.
No, I think you got uh
What am I looking at the right thing here?
No, it's the previous one, go to one page earlier.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
That's the sixty-seven thousand seven, seven thirty-nine.
Gotcha. Thirty-four hundred for police details, huh? All right, anyone have any questions?
This is the lot right by the This is the lot right by the, right by the, um, pond, right?
No, this is from the, near the train station, that Rumford Lot, right across from the new, uh, condo association. And bringing that bike path to connect to the old colony way on the other side, which we did earlier a couple of years ago.
Okay, no, no comment. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, looks seeing no other comments. Move on to the next item.
Uh, just a vote to approve that as well.
Uh, we needed a vote, okay. Uh, need a motion first. Alright, this, uh, motion by Mr. Trobridge, seconded by Mr. Shonval, uh, a vote, Mr. Shonval?
Yes.
Mr. Trobridge?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Afterwards?
Hi.
And Frank, first name basis?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Alright.
Excellent. The last, uh, well, I should say the last of the two town projects. This is a revision of a previous one that you guys approved. Uh, what's in highlight is the addition. And while it's a couple of small things, the big thing here is that, uh, the electric service feeding. That apartment complex, that small building right across the street from, uh, not across the street, across the parking lot from Mansfield Bank. Um, that's connected to it. That would have to go underground. And so that extra cost was not put in the original budget. So what I'm doing is just we're putting in that in and that estimate is coming from a, I forget the, the electrician that we, uh, got a quote from. So it would change the overhead service to an underground service. Bring the electric service into that building. It needs to, you can't do, cannot not do that for the, make this project clean. Uh, that parking lot is going to be redone. We're going to replace it with, uh, similar fixtures that we did with Old Colony Way. Uh, it's, it's going to be decorative. It's not going to have the, uh, it's not the post top lights that we have on North Main Street because that light shines outward. This light will be decorative fixtures pointing downward. So it eliminates the glare, uh, to the buildings next door. Uh, it's much more pleasing to the eyes. It is more expensive, but those have already been approved. Uh, it's this portion of the project that, um, I'm asking to adjust via previous approval to, uh, include the. The things that are highlighted, which brings the total to fifty nine thousand two twenty seven.
Motion to approve the adjusted budget.
I can.
Uh, seconded by Frank. Uh, roll call vote, Frank?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's five zero. Uh, Joe, I know this and the, and the other project, I, I know it's, it's difficult now to do the work. When do you expect? These will be done, these two projects?
Yeah, so I think, um, Mark Cook and Ralph have a meeting tomorrow to discuss the scheduling of this. So I think they're going to be talking about it. Um, I don't have an estimate, the time until, till I talk to them and figure out what their plans are. But I do know that they're going to, they're going to be discussing this tomorrow.
Alright, very good.
The last, uh, item on the, uh, regular session here is something that's a. Important development that we've been, I, I can say that I've been on the, as you know, on the board of directors with, uh, Massachusetts Municipal Wholesale Electric Company. They're a joint action agency that provides a lot of the services for us. One of the things I've been talking to them about is an, an initiative. That is similar to what we did with, uh, if you remember, we did an interruptible rate. We also, uh, put together the, the DG unit and it's kind of tied, even though it's not the same thing, but it's tied to the same purpose. Uh, what our distributive generator does, it doesn't operate much, but it, what it does is it operates to offset peak costs. And so by, by putting that peak cost in, maybe use presentation earlier tonight, talk about, not only does it save. It, it's not so much an energy avoidance, but it's the two main drivers are capacity and transmission costs. And that hundred forty percent factor has a big impact on Mansfield Electric Costs. So what I pushed for M W A to do is to have a program that we could push technology. To control people's, uh, costs at, at a, at a level at the residential level. Uh, it's a development program and this connected homes program is a development program. And so what they're doing is they're working with a partnership. Um, with a, uh, a, a third party provider and I'm forgetting the name of it, but basically what they're doing is they're going to. Uh, it's a voluntary program and I, I can tell you that I know at least three or four customers who proactively approached us on this, uh, topic. Wanted, want to participate in it. It would be on the residential rate, it would be, uh, a discounted rate. So that when they can, they'll get notices just like we get notices for the distributor generator to run. They'll get notices ahead of time saying, hey, we think next Tuesday, uh, between these hours and this hour, uh, is a potential peak time. And what we'll do is if they agree, they can hit the, the app on their phone and say, I agree to participate. And they can over, always override it as well. I've been told. I haven't seen the technology, but I've been told that they can override it too and say. Um, so we can then, you know, the thermostat will be controlled, some controllers for the H three, H C and everything else. All that stuff will be controlled. So they'll turn off their loads during that peak time or reducing their loads. Pre-identify those, not something that we're just picking and choosing. They, they would say, yes, control my thermostat control or whatever. Just for those two, those period of hours. And with that, they'll get the savings. Uh, not only just to avoid electrical costs, but there will actually be an incentive for them to provide that incentive. And it's, it's on a per measure basis. So in other words, if they, if they, uh, say, all right, allow you to control my thermostat, they'll get ten dollars off their, their. A ten dollar credit for their bill, um, and so forth. And that's how it works. So it's an innovative program and, uh, you know, there's a few utilities nationwide who are trying this type of technology, but you know, Massachusetts is a, a, a prime ground for this. And I know M W A and I and other managers have been working on this program. So. What's necessary though, unfortunately, what you see is a lot of contractual documents and I, I, I went over this with them. Uh, we don't belong to their energy efficiency program. Uh, we use Energy New England for that and they do an excellent job for us. But in order for us to belong to the connected home program, we kind of have to sign up, not for extra costs, uh, related to the energy efficiency programs. It just contractually, I need to sign these documents so that we can then participate in the connected home program. And then a connected home program will then be able to provide, and it's a pilot project. It's not going to be something that, uh, everybody is interested in doing and. But what, what we're hoping to do is if we get, you know, ten, twenty customers who might be interested in doing this. If we can then show, uh, the benefits of it, not only to them, but then also to the customer base as a whole. There are certain customers who would be interested in saving money and then also being able to control during peak times. So it's innovative. Uh, there's a lot of details that go behind it, but in a nutshell, that's basically what we're, we're proposing in front of you.
Mike?
Joe, when you say that, um, we're controlling their thermostats and things like that. Is that correct? What, what you stated? Or is it we're setting a signal and they are controlling their own? Cause I worry about the liability.
Well, yeah. I think customer and M W A has approached that from a standpoint that what they would do. Is they would sign up through this application and then that application, the customers would be able to override it at any time. So from that, I'm trusting that that's the technology that's working. Uh, for example, they'd have to approve for us to do that. And that, and that's say, uh, it's not Mansfield Electric, but what it is is. M W A is administering this program through this third party provider. There is going to be a contractual document that, that's going to have to release the liability issues. That the customer would have to participate in. So I know that that exists. I, had I seen it yet? No, but I think we have to kind of get to this stage first and then I could start seeing the other ones. But that liability issue is brought up and M W A is going to have that. Uh, actually it's the third party provider who's going to provide that to M W A and then the customer has to sign off on that.
So. Steve is showing us his, uh, the app I looks like.
My healthy sixty eight, um, for heat, but, um. That's what you mean is that app that you use with M W A will basically. Read this app on my phone that says you've set your temperature at a reasonable rate to give you the ten dollar credit.
It would only work, I should say, it would only be credited to them. And that's just, this is an interesting, uh, perspective here. So I'm just making up a number. I forget what the number is for the thermostat, but say, alright, I allow you to control my thermostat. And like we do for the DG unit, we're not necessarily sure what the peak day or time is until about ten, fifteen days after the month is completed. All we'll do is we'll send out the messages and they have to react to it or not. But they'll only get the ten dollars for that rebate for that month. If they actually, we did control the thermostat and it did hit peak and it did contribute to the actual, so it actually has to be real. It can't be perspective. So they could override it and say, no, I need to have my, uh, you know, the air conditioning running at that time and. Therefore it didn't have that change. So that's like they would lose out on that. It would only cost them that, that rebate for that month.
So, so Joe, is it a couple of days a month that someone will be told, hey, this could be a peak day. So go ahead and raise your AC temp to seventy five, not seventy. And some days you hit it and some days you don't. If you happen to have a gathering that afternoon and can't turn it up to seventy five. Then sorry, you lost your ten bucks, but that's part of the game.
Yeah, and it, the estimate time, average time, if, if you've seen the M W A chart that shows our DG unit. I think the average time is like three or four, uh, occurrences a month is the average. Um, and they're pretty good at predicting when that happens. But from the standpoint that, you know, based on that, you're right. And again, it could override at that one moment because they have to. But it, it, it only happened, the only way they'll know if they lost a discount is if they did participate in another event and the event was the peak, then therefore they would get the discount.
And, and we're trusting that, right? We're trusting that M W A has the software to do this to avoid fraud. Cause you could easily, this is only for AC, I presume. It's not for heat. Or not for gas heat.
Uh, I'm not sure. Don't know the answer to that question.
Uh, it says it's for a variety of devices on the, on the right up there. It says, uh.
Okay.
Like the kind of heating system I have in my office here, uh, listed a few different. Uh, thanks. Now, Joe, um. Do we, the customers can potentially save money. Does M M E D save any money or are we incurring expenses to run this program or? How's it affecting us?
That's a good question. And this is a pilot project. So yes, we're going to be expending costs to pay these rebates obviously. And there is a small administrative fee that, uh, M W A is passing on because not only their overhead, but, but more so the third party providers. What's the, the cost involved in this. So there is cost. And that's why I'm saying it's not a permanent program, but it's a development program. It's a pilot project, if you will. And to see the results and see if it matters. And then in determining that actuality is going to be important for what things could happen in the future. So. And we're going to have a learning curve here for this. So that's, it is an expense. So it's not necessarily a, uh, I should. Also add that yes, to answer your question directly. Mansfield does save money because during that peak time and we have customers shaving their load. Yes, it does have an impact. It's small, individual people, uh, they load to that, it's small. But it is. I don't think we're doing it for, at, at this stage, we're not doing it for that. We want to see what the results of this program does. And then if we do rent this up in a, in a future endeavor, then we'll, we'll have a good foundation of what, what works and what doesn't.
I mean philosophically, to me, it's. It's a good thing to try to train people to be more energy efficient and, you know, think about. Geez, I'm going to be out for eight hours. Do I need to leave my AC cranking, you know? Uh, so in that regard, I think it's, uh, it's a good idea. Uh, Mike?
I mean, look at it this way, Neil. If, if they can save ten dollars a month, there's probably five more nip bottles that they can throw out on the road for you.
Good, give me something to do in my free time. Alright, Joe, you, you need us to vote on this, I assume, right?
Yes, yes, to execute the contracts involved and participate in the connected home program.
Alright, Steve, you have a question?
Um, a question and I probably will provide you the, uh. The motion. Um, there's a lot to sign here. Joe, um, I know you're an attorney and you, you know, you don't, just don't play one. Have you gone through it all to make sure there's no issues, no concerns? Um, there, there's dozens of pages here.
Yeah, yeah, actually I could painstakingly read every page of it. And I had a lot of questions and I went through this with Matt I from M W A. And, uh, Nick Scobbo is, uh, he, he's a well-known attorney out of Boston that, uh, that M W A hires. And, um, is famous for these long contracts and the complicated connections between these contracts. Uh, if they're really, uh, put it this way, I did have, uh, Chris Pollitt from K P Law who represents us and the utility stuff. I didn't hire him to go through every document because it's just, I didn't want to waste the money extending that. But I could have some key points of this contract that I wanted his nuanced approach to how this would work. And. You know, it is just how M W A operates. This is, a lot of these contracts, if we design, if we, instead of signing up for Energy New England. We did M W A to do our energy audits and to do our home energy audits and the rebate program for the appliance rebates and some of that. We would still have to sign all of these except for the last one, connected homes. So all of that involved. And now at that end of the point at time, I had about twenty questions for M W A, but. At the end of the day, what I wanted to be sure of is that we're not going to be charged. Extra administrative fees other than what's tied to the connected home program. And that's ultimately what my concern was. And that we're not paying for the home energy program administrative costs that M W A has for that. We shouldn't be paying any of that. So I, I'm assured of that. Ultimately, I think it, it's fine. Uh, it's just. Same contract. So I'm not terribly worried. And I'm on the board of M W A. And so if I had a real problem with it, I would scream. Pretty hot heavily about it.
Okay.
Well, I gotta trust that they, they got an interest in, in mine.
Well, I could assure you that I didn't read every page except for the certification of vote, which I have to sign. Maybe Mike has or maybe Frank has, but, um, all confidence in you that you've gone through it all and made the changes you need to make.
Alright, someone want to make a motion?
No, I thought I, I said I would do that, right?
Um, yeah.
Let me get to the agenda here. I, I, I moved to authorize participation. The M W A helps connected homes development program. Uh, and allow the. The, um, allow Joe to assign the appropriate documents.
And the second? So a second from Frank?
Okay.
Okay, second from Frank Del Vecchio. Uh, let's vote. Frank?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes, five zero. Alright, um, thank you, Joe. Is that the end of your portion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Uh, so moving on, uh, comments from commissioners. We'll start with Frank.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh. Just once again, I think we all agree we want to, uh. Give our good wishes and our thanks to the entire staff of Electric Department and the work they're doing and the risks they're taking. And I know everyone at, at some level is taking some, uh, some kind of risk, but, uh. I think their work is appreciated all around and we don't say. I know Jess does, but maybe I don't say it often enough. Thank you.
Alright, uh, Mike?
I, you know, it's funny, I, it's all right up on what Frank said. I agree a hundred percent. The, I happened to be in another town. Somebody was talking about, um. You know, national grid and, and I said, you know, we have great rates in Mansfield. Our power very, really goes out. I said, in our elected department, they're revered as gods. And, um, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, just the last storm. And how portions of Norton had pretty much been without power for quite a while. Um, and you know, we had a lot of damage yet. We were able to turn that right around. So thanks to all the people at Mansfield, uh, Electric Department.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Steve, anything?
Yeah, I want to echo but both Frank and Mike, and I presume I'm pre-echoing Jess as well that, um. You know, in times of crisis and times of challenge, it really brings out the best in people and it really, um. You know, how people, and especially Joe, your team has responded and acted in the time of crisis. We've had a couple of them, not just the virus, but a couple of actual storms and stuff. Tells a lot about you guys' character. Um, I know your, your team is a, a bunch of characters. But, uh, they've got some great character as well. So we all appreciate that and want to continue to, to thank you for, and your team. For, for managing the crisis and the occasional storm crises that come up as well.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Jess?
Well, I guess Steve, Frank and Mike have set the table. Um, you know, just talking about that last storm. Even beyond the, the, the light department crew, which did an amazing job, it was windy and was really lousy out. You know, the police, the fire department, the DPW, everybody was there, whether they were cutting trees down and moving stuff and. You know, the, 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 everybody working together to get it done and get the power on as quickly as possible is really. You know, shows well for just, not only just the, uh, you know, the light department crew, but everybody. So good job to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I echo what everyone said, uh, in regards to the storm. Um, and one quick question for you, Joe. Uh, you, I know you guys communicate through, you do, you know, good job getting information out. You work through the town manager's office to put stuff on Facebook and social media?
So what we do is we, um, we put a phone message, whenever there's an outage, we try to put a message in the phone system. So most people call. And I, I just got a, I think it's like forty or eighty, I forget the number, but it's like eighty lines. People can call in once into the phone system. So eighty people will hear it at once, the message. And we try to tell them an estimated time and everything else and, and location. Um, and then we put the same message on our webpage. And so there's a pop-up box. It's red that shows up. And so they can look on our webpage and get an update. And we have the advanced metering system in place on that webpage. We have a graphical image of where the outages are in general. So people will know that there's, if they see a lot of outages, they'll, they know that we're taking care of it and we're putting a reservation. And we put that same message to, uh, to Nancy in the town manager's office. And then she pushes it out to Facebook and everything else.
Yeah. Very good. Good. Yeah. That process seems to work great. And, um, related more to the COVID nineteen situation, I know, uh, you had sent us something about, uh, there's a message going out, or maybe it's already gone out in the most recent bills regarding the community assistance fund to help people who may need help.
So what we did is, uh, we, for those in the audience who may be watching is that, uh, several years ago, the board did approve uh, the development of the Mansfield Community Assistance Fund. Uh, it is through West Side Benevolent Circle. I always get that wrong. And Mansfield Bank and Social Town Social Services Group. And we put that together as a charitable fund because, uh, other funds exist and they do provide assistance. But what happens is a lot of that money goes away to other towns that need people, that people need assistance. So it's not a bad thing. But ninety-five percent of that money is we're not helping people in Mansfield. So we founded this fund. It's been managed well. It provides assistance that goes beyond, um, the, the state, the light heap. They call it the, the low income, uh, heating assistance fund. And so the town services group, uh, handles intake for that. And then when they need additional assistance, that goes above and beyond that, the Mansfield Community Assistance Fund is existing. So about, about a month or so ago, we met and Laurie Anderson is the key contact person for us on that. And, uh, they met and they discussed, you know, the impact that this coronavirus might have on, on people's bills. And obviously there is a moratorium on shut offs, but from the standpoint that people are still going to be developing large balances and how, how do they manage that? So, um, we petitioned, we threw our interests, we put in a little description of what we're doing. And then also from the standpoint of the Mansfield Community Assistance Fund. So we encourage people, if they can, to, uh, reach out. And they can go on the Mansfield Electric website and they can make a credit card payment through that. That'll go directly to Mansfield Community Assistance Fund, or they can drop a check off, uh, to the appropriate, uh, mailbox on that.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. All right. So, uh, next up, we are going to move into executive session. It's just two items I just want to mention for maybe a future, uh, agenda would be, uh, an update on the, uh, the efforts for green communities certification. I know we had a meeting in March on that. But maybe we should update all the other board members on what was discussed there. And also it's that time of year, I believe, we need to start talking about Joe's annual review. Assuming that's correct, Joe, if you have the template, you want to send it to me and I can circulate it and get that process going. I know we, we're trying to get back on our regular schedule with that. So hopefully if we start now, we'll, we'll meet that goal.
And if I, if I could just add, uh, one thing that you guys mentioned earlier about the, the, the response from the staff on that outage we had a couple of weeks ago. I, obviously you guys already know, but, uh, you know, that, because we were working under the conditions with the coronavirus and most of the staff working from home. Um, what happens is that, you know, all the people that were working at from home, taking the front office calls are, were right there. And, um, even though it's past the time, they, they immediately got on, uh, our operations staff, uh, electric maintenance, as well as the line staff. They all came in, they all, I mean, that was really, uh, two or three hours of real hectic stuff going on there. And tremendous damage was taking place, but they isolated, I, I think the big, the biggest, um, compliment that I can give my staff is because when that hit, we had about two thousand, less than two thousand customers who were out of power. And for us to get those, majority of those two thousand customers back in, uh, within like three hours was incredible amount of work that had to be done. But I'm talking about air brake switches. We didn't have air brake switches in place that we would like to have had based on that condition. So the guys, you know, took out the circuit and then cut the cables and, you know, temporary cross arm dead ends on cross arms. So that we can get switched back in, get most people back in. And then, you know, the twenty customers that were remaining out of power because there was tremendous amount of devastation. Uh, I was not there the whole time when they were constructing, reconstructing that over the next few days, but I was there every day, two or three times a day. And I would just show up and I'd just talk to people on the street and not one of them were complaining because they knew how much damage was. But it's incredible how much they appreciated, uh, the, the line guys and everybody working to get things back as soon as possible. And one, uh, lady's name, but she said to me, she said, you know, these guys are a really good bunch of guys. They really work so hard. And I said, as much as you're seeing them, uh, from afar and doing their work, I said, they're even better in person. I said, and they really are. And they're, they're a great, uh, great staff and we're very lucky.
All right. On that bright note, uh, I'm going to ask the clerk to read a motion to, uh, move us into executive session. Do we need to adjourn this meeting first and then do that, or just read the motion?
I, I'm hoping that we'll come back in open session.
Yeah, I believe we're coming back and hope, I'm going to read it so that we come back to open session and hopefully we get Mike a light bulb because he's still in the dark over there. But anyway, um, Mr. Chair.
He's conserving, conserving energy.
He's getting us ten bucks today. There you go. Anyway, um, Mr. Chair, I vote to enter into executive session for the following reasons and to return to open session for vote to approve job descriptions. Pursuant to Mass General law, chapter one sixty-four, section forty-seven, the Mass General law, chapter thirty, A, section twenty-one, exemption three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. To review and vote to approve minutes of January twenty-second, twenty twenty executive session. And then we'll vote to return to open session after that.
All right. Uh, I do declare. So this requires roll call vote like everything else these days. So I'll start with Frank.
Yes.
Jess? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, uh, I think at this point, we all need to turn off our cameras and our mics and then dial in to the number that was, uh, in Carrie's email. See you soon. Mansfield Municipal Electric Department Board. So, um, we were just in executive session and we voted to approve some job description changes. So I believe we need to vote in open session to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, you'd like a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the job descriptions for the office administrator and for the business and finance manager.
Second. Second by Jess Adwitz. Okay. We'll take a vote. Uh, Jess?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mike, you have a comment?
Uh, yeah. Should we also be approving the rates as well?
Uh,
and rates?
The, the compensation?
Yes.
I would think, I wouldn't use raise. I'd use compensation because.
I said rates, R A T E S.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So is it the, um, it's, it's, it's according to a schedule. Is that part of the job description or is that separate from the job description?
So what I, what I might suggest is that the, um, well, because it wasn't an open time. So I could, we can, I can draft a motion, a motion to approve the job descriptions with the appropriate, salary schedules for FY twenty, for the office administrator and business and finance manager. The office administrator for FY twenty would be sixty-seven thousand or forty. And the business and finance manager for FY twenty would be ninety-three two thirty-nine.
Okay. I'll amend the motion.
In a second. Deuces.
According to the appropriate, uh, uh, salary schedule, uh, template.
Fine. Okay. All right. So let's do the vote again. We'll do this with Jess.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's five zero. Okay. I believe we are done and we can adjourn if somebody wants to make a motion to that effect. Motion to approve, adjourned by Mike, seconded by Jess. All in favor? Judge Jess?
Yes.
Uh, Frank?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike? Yes. And I vote yes. So thank you, everybody. That was pretty impressive. Two and a half hours, three and a half hours of technology. Have a good rest of the week.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe.